Only fifty-one more, still Christmas. If any of y'all are counting down on the calendar. It is Wednesday, want to welcome all of you to Commissioners' Court. We're gonna start with an invocation this morning, followed by our pledges. I have invited, and he has responded, Evangelist John M. Lewis, and he is associated with the Grace Covenant Christian Center. So Pastor Lewis, we're gonna ask you to lead the invocation as we all stand, and then if y'all will join us in the pledges.
Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for allowing us to gather together today. Let righteousness be our banner in the things that we have to accomplish. Father, I pray that you would give each and everyone that's gathered here today the spirit of wisdom and revelation and the knowledge of you, that we may receive the instruction of wisdom, of justice, of judgment, and of equity. And Father, we thank you for being with us today, that we might do this in the spirit of righteousness and the spirit of love, that we may do what is our duty to do to the people that have appointed us. And Father, we thank you, and we give you praise and the glory, in Jesus' name, and everyone say it.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, and if you would be seated, please. Commissioner Dobianski is not with us today. He is at a seminar gaining vast amounts of information and knowledge, I'm sure. So we'll welcome him back at the next court. Moving to public comments, are there any? Mr. Robert Goldstein?
Lucky people.
Yes, if you'll come to the podium.
I don't know why they asked me to do this. As a certain person I know would say, be there or be square. January twentieth, our annual Crime Stoppers banquet is going to be held at the First Baptist Church in Navasota, starting at 6:00 P.M. Our speaker is J.B. Smith of the Lufkin P.D. His stats go quite far, he's been in law enforcement over twenty years. He's an investigator for the Lufkin P.D. He's Texas State Representative for Crime Stoppers, appointed by the governor. He's done a great deal for the citizens of Lufkin and Crime Stoppers, all the way up to the governor's office. He's well informed, he represents both sides of the story. I've heard him speak several times, in fact, I know the man. He's very conscious of not just the law enforcement officers, but their wives and children. And that's one side of law enforcement that people really don't get to hear about. I think, being ex-law enforcement myself, that the wife puts up with a great deal. Probably more than we do, because we're so much into what we're doing that it's sometimes hard to express ourselves. He has a big understanding of that, and I've heard him speak. Now, I don't know what he's gonna speak on, to be honest with you, but he does bridge both sides of the equation.
Thank you.
And I know you wanted to tell them that there's no charge for dinner, it's strictly a donation, and there's gonna be an auction as a fundraiser, right?
Correct, ma'am, but for you?
Yes.
We're gonna charge.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. There was another hand? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Susan Patrick?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
I just want to invite you to a couple of events as well, and everybody. The Republican Party of Grimes County is having our Reagan Dinner, February third. We would love to have anybody who wants to come, to come and join us. There is information on our website at GCRP.org. That's Grimes County Republican Party, easy to remember, those initials. And it's gonna be a great evening. We're having two speakers of note, and they are Raphael Cruz, who's the father of Ted Cruz, our senator, one of our senators, and he's gonna speak to us, and then also Trevor Loudon, who has been on Fox News and other places speaking. And he's done a lot of research for over thirty years on subversive forces, Marxist, and even terrorist groups, and how they play a role in our government. And so I think it'll be very interesting. I'm personally looking very much forward to it. And then we have a great set dinner and auctions. So it's gonna be a fun evening, so I would love to have everybody attend. Be great. And then the other one is, we are having a... Well, we're actually, the Republican Party's having several forums coming up, but there's a forum to fill our House Representative that was Leighton Schubert, and now has five people running. And that is hosted by the Grimes County Republican Party and the Republican Women on February fifteenth at 5:30. And I will email that to all of you. I meant to bring flyers, and my printer gave me a mess. And so I'll just stick in the email to you.
Location?
The location is at the Lions Club Building at the Fairgrounds. And it's 5:30, and we're hoping, or we are planning to invite all candidates running that will be on a Grimes County ballot, at all, from Governor. I don't think he'll come.
No.
But from the Governor, all the way to all of our local races. And so we will have all the candidates there for a meet and greet from 5:30 to 6:30, and then we'll begin, and begin to let them introduce themselves, and then narrow it down, and just have the forum, the question and answer period, with our House seat reps. And we attended, I was able to attend one last night in another county of those guys, and it was really interesting, so I think that would be worth doing. So there will be information out about it, it will also be on our website. It isn't yet, but it will be soon. And you can get any other of the information there. And like I said, I'll email it to you. See ya.
There was a lady on KBTX this morning about 5:48 that looked very similar to you.
That was my twin.
Your twin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other comments? And finally, are there any other comments? All right, we'll move on, on our agenda. Consent Agenda Items, number three, number four, number five. We've had this in our hands for a little bit of time to review. Are there any questions on Items Three, Four, and Five, Consent Agenda Items? If there are no questions, is there a motion?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda Items Three, Four, and Five.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Mallett made the motion. Commissioner Walker seconded the motion. All in favor of approving Consent Agenda Items Three, Four, and Five as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Treasurer's Report.
Treasurer's Report.
Consider and approve the... Or, I'm sorry, not Treasurer's Report. Treasurer's Information. Do you want to share that with us, Ms. Trent?
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you, everyone, for your thoughts and prayers for last week. Bud and I really did use it, and I was good to us, okay?
Amen.
It is customary for the county to follow suit with the IRS recommendation of the mileage at fifty-four point five cents per mile. This is a penny increase from last year. The other two items, the eighteen cents and fourteen cents, will help y'all when you file your income tax return. It doesn't apply to the county. But I'd like to see that approved, so we can move forward.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions for Ms. Trent?
I'd like to make the motion, if there aren't any questions, to approve the standard mileage rates listed below as issued by the Internal Revenue Service for 2018, beginning on January first, 2018. The standard mileage rates for the use of car, also vans, pickups, and panels trucks, will be fifty-four point five cents per mile for business miles driven, up to one cent from the rate for 2017. Eighteen cents per mile driven for medical or moving purposes, up one cent from the rate of 2017. Fourteen cents per mile driven in service or charitable organizations.
Second. We have a motion, and from Commissioner Walker. We have a second from Commissioner Husfield. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Well, Commissioner Dobianski is not here. Did we end up getting that service award? And Lucy Pope is out with the flu.
He didn't give it to me, and I don't...
Commissioner Walker, we're gonna put you on hold for another week for recognizing that you're... We missed you last week, okay? All right, so we'll call it even and try to get to you next week, so...
Well, if you want to just shake my hand, that's fine. I can get the pen later.
We want pictures and everything, so, okay. So if you make that an Agenda Item for the next Commissioners' Court, we'd be most happy. And that's your color, too, right? Okay. All right, so we're gonna table that for a week. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Voters Registration Elections Administrator, Ms. Brzezinski?
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here for Rebecca Duff, who was at a conference today. So what we have is our standard election services contract for each party, the Democratic Party and the Republican Party, which they have both already signed and agreed to. And this will be a joint primary, as we've done in the past. So please let me know if you have any questions.
Can you share with the court? I think most of us know, but some might not be that familiar. Why do we elect to hold a joint election between Democrats and Republicans?
That's a very good question. Basically, it would save the county money and save the parties money, because they both get to share one pole in place, and share pole workers, and share equipment. So you're not gonna have separate equipment, we all share everything, which reduce the costs.
Okay, and for about how long have we been doing? How long have we been doing that?
Well, I've been here for seven years, and we've been doing that for much longer than that. So we've been doing it for quite a while, and it seems to work for everybody.
Right. My previous position, we had done it for that nine years, so...
Correct.
Gary, do you have any feel for how long it has indeed gone on in the county?
Long enough, plus we're all friendly, we're all friendly, this together, and they're no bad at backstabbing going on in the counties.
Right. So I think we have a good precedent for...
Yes, sir.
Running our elections primaries and generals...
I agree.
In the county. Okay. Are there any other questions for Ms. Brzezinski?
It requires all of our signatures.
Yes.
It does.
Actually, the signatures are on the joint resolution, and if you'd like, I'd like to read that. Whereas the Democratic Party of Grimes County, Texas, and the Republican Party of Grimes County, Texas, desire to enter into a joint primary election services contract with Grimes County Election Administrator as the county election officer, and whereas the Commissioners' Court of Grimes County desires to give authorization for said contract, and now therefore be it resolved by the Commissioners' Court of Grimes County, Texas, that said Commissioners' Court authorizes a joint contract by and among James Harris, the Democratic Party Chair, and Susan Patrick, the Republican County Chair, and Rebecca Duff, the County Elections Officer of Grimes County, Texas, for the conduct and supervision of the Grimes County Joint Primary Election on March the sixth, 2018, and the Grimes County Joint Primary Runoff Election, if necessary, on May the twenty-second, 2018.
Okay. So we kinda killed two birds with one stone. We were on item number seven.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'd like to make the motion, if there's any questions about it, to... I'd like to make the motion on accepting the contracts with the Republican and Democratic Chairs for the March sixth, 2018, primary election.
Okay. Second. Commissioner Walker has made the motion. Commissioner Mallett has seconded the motion. Are there any further questions or discussion? All in favor of approving Item Number Seven, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And then consider and take action to accept the joint resolution that was just read. Is there a motion for that?
Yes, I make that motion.
Okay. Commissioner Walker, put some motion, is there? Commissioner Mallett, seconds. Any comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye. I've consented, I mean, Agenda Item Number Eight.
Aye.
All opposed? Carries, for the... Thank you, Ms. Brzezinski.
May I make a quick comment?
Yes, ma'am.
We are now accepting applications for ballot by mail. The deadline is February the twenty-third. The deadline to register to vote is February the fifth. Early voting will start on Tuesday, because Monday is President's Day, on the twentieth of February.
Did you ever get confirmed in regards to the amount of early voting days since we did have a holiday? You know, we were, the discussion was nine or ten.
Right, because that last day of early voting is the county holiday. But we need to confirm the Secretary of State, because I think we have to be open on that day to conduct early voting. Yes, sir. But we will confirm that with the state. But that first day, Monday, is a holiday, so they have officially started it on Tuesday.
Right, okay. If you would let us know, we would appreciate it.
Yes, I will.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving to Item Number Nine. County Judge Joe Fowles, considering take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge as signatory. I know we've had a couple of grass fires in the county. That was last week, that was before Sunday nights. Rain have any of the Commissioners received calls from citizens or fire chiefs to institute the burn ban? Do we need to make a motion to continue it? Johnson, just let it ride? Okay, we'll let Item Number Nine ride, and we'll move to Item Number Ten. Receive update on the strategic plan. Anybody have anything to report on that?
Well, we did get, I guess, some email from Michael Lloyd from PJAL about, I guess, getting a workshop together with some, each department. I guess there's a couple of dates that are possible for them. I guess we, I get the word out to the department heads. Friday, January nineteenth, or the following Tuesday, the twenty-third, what would be a best, I guess, best date for the department heads.
I'm not gonna be available on the nineteenth, and I emailed it back, told them the twenty-third was best for me. Now, I haven't checked with the other departments, and I don't think it's gonna be actually a workshop. I think they want to meet one-on-one with each department head to discuss what they've gone, you know, where they're at right now.
Okay.
So we'll set that up, hopefully for the twenty-third, and I'll contact each department and let them know.
Okay. And I do understand that they came out to visit with Vanessa in regards to the county clerk records, volumes, book sizes of, for storage and all of that placement, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So I don't know if y'all were aware that they had that session, but that was good.
Commissioner Mallett, do you know if it's intended to be a Commissioners' Court meeting?
No, it was just to meet with department heads and ourselves. I was trying to get the word out for the department heads.
No. Will the two of you be there? I mean, obviously, it's permissible for the two of you.
I guess it may, we want to try to make sure to get two, to get all the department heads, so if we can, hopefully one of them can...
Do you think you can see all the department heads in one day?
I don't know. Well, we might not meet every department head, but the ones that, you know, we had issues with and concerns with. Some of the departments are pretty much cut and dried, I mean, it's pretty simple. I'd say there's probably at least a half a dozen of us that need to get together.
It just seemed to me that based upon the last meeting, that to be productive, that there needs to be some organization. It didn't necessarily need to be a Commissioners' Court meeting. It may need to be a meeting where you can shut the door and bring in a person.
This was probably more along that line.
Good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. One of the things that I'd like us, as a court, to do is to do a pretty hefty review of our strategic plan, and that is that everything's listed on the website, and we have who it's assigned to, or it's not assigned to anybody. It's a one-year, it's a two-year, we're actively working on it, it's a four-to-five. I'd like us to be able to update that. Also, those that are completed, at least based on our opinion, make that notation on the website, so that the citizens that are engaged and that are looking at that can at least know our opinion. We checked that one off, we checked that one off, we've checked that one. Because the, we're moving, we're not complete, but with the two-way radio system, we're making good progress on that, and that was the number-one item. We're moving forward on the animal shelter. We haven't broke ground on that, but we're moving pretty good with the input that we've had. Also, one of our main issues was the website. And because of where we're at now with the website, we're live, and if we don't get too much more input, we ought to be able to check the, we're done with this one for now, box. And I think the importance of that is just to let the citizens that are indeed looking at our strategic plan see that we are making progress. Also, as we knock some of those items off that have been assigned, we need to start putting some names and some time periods on some of those other items. Because even though we prioritized that in the Town Hall meetings and things of that sort with the groups after the fact, there might be somebody that was really anxious about Item Twenty, whatever that was, and they want to know how soon that's gonna get pulled up or taken care of. So I think we'd have an obligation to give them some feedback in that regard.
Now that the website's up, that's a good...
And I think people have the...
Source of information.
Exactly. So we just need to make sure we're actively on that.
And some of those items are gonna be, too, with the website being updated, you had your communication amongst departments and stuff that the public wanted to know what was happening in the region and stuff. So you might have some that have two or three places to check off.
Exactly, exactly. So maybe we can get that list from sixty-five, or sixty-seven, sixty-eight, whatever the number really is, maybe we can knock it down to fifty.
Well, we just kinda started on, like, one through ten, wasn't it?
Right.
Something like that, and, you know, firsthand.
Right. Ms. Nichols?
I have a comment on the new website. Any department that has attachments, like PDF documents, please go online and check it, because most of mine are not working, and I'm gonna resend them the PDF files, so that they can try to put them on again.
Okay. And right now, I think Vanessa Corbett may have found wrong, but we have two gatekeepers on the website, that's yourself and Cherie. So we've limited those that can have access for input, and that's for our protection. But those changes need to go, I would believe, through the judge's office, but Vanessa has graciously allotted time for making updates and changes. But we want to make sure that what does get on our website is appropriate, and it's not out of order. Anything else on strategic... Does that sound like something you folks are willing to do? And if that's a... And maybe that's in more of a workshop form?
No.
No?
It'll be fine. If you have it on here, it's fine, because we intend to do some more updates as far as EMS services, but we have, now have a committee, so we're seeing where the committee is.
Excellent.
Judge, I'll make the comment. The former judge had intentions of...
Who was that?
Having some accountability of what's taking place. And, but there was never a specific plan laid out. And if you said to yourself, as a presiding officer, as the person who prepares the agenda, we're gonna put one through five on for this week, or one through ten on for this week, that might be the way to address it. And of course, we have the continuity issue with you, as well as Cherie. She came on board, I think, after the strategic plan was developed.
Correct.
And so this is always gonna happen with the lack of continuity, where you have, you know, changeover employees, that we may all have in our heads where we are on particular items, or on the plan in general, or what we've done on various things before. But the reality is, when you bring new folks in, especially when they are players when it comes to the agenda, or it comes to the website, or it comes to ticking off whether we've done things on the strategic plan, we need to have verbalization of that. And so for you to stick it on there and say, today, we're gonna talk about one through five, and the next week, we're gonna talk about six through ten, may be the best way to get it done.
Good suggestion, thank you. Any other comments on that Agenda Item? Number Ten. Let's move to Number Eleven. Number Eleven, considering take action to approve the lease agreement between Grimes County, Texas, and St. Joseph's Regional Health Center, and authorize the county judge as signatory, see Attachment Eleven. We've had that on the agenda a couple of times through Commissioners' Court previously. We have gone through the language, and I believe everybody's had a fair amount of time to comment. Our county attorney has gone through it with a fine-tooth comb.
Fine-tooth comb is my staff, but yes.
She's right behind you.
I know. We have, Judge, you may remember, but you were probably just in the audience when we talked about this.
I was.
There was initial draft of the lease from the nineties. There was then a First Amendment and a Second Amendment, I think. And then there was the question of whether there was going to be a renewal. This lease ran from ninety-seven to oh-seven, and then oh-seven to seventeen, was to expire last year, that's why it became an issue. St. Joseph's had some language they wanted us to add, not horribly substantive, to be honest with you. We incorporated all of the changes, the First Amendment, Second Amendment, and the new request into the original lease. There was a time where we walked through this thing in color-coded charts of which paragraphs were from the original, which were from first, which were from second, which may make no sense. There's some things in here that, they may have been appropriate in the nineties, weren't necessarily appropriate now. And to be honest with you, it's just stuff that's just fluff. For instance, there's a paragraph that talks about all of the contracts in which I think St. Joseph's was engaged in, would be attached as a copy or as an exhibit, and there aren't any. And so, I mean, you're talking about things that are irrelevant, to be honest with you. The court approved the agreement, and it happened to be in the hustle of, maybe Thanksgiving, I don't know, maybe coming up on Christmas. But court approved renewing the lease, but I failed to point out at the time the renewal that there was a blank. Couldn't be seen, I couldn't see it because, or didn't see it because of the highlights and the color. I brought it to the attention of the judge after that and said, are you sure this is what the court wanted to do, is leave this blank? Because the substantive question was, did you want to renew the lease for the same amount, and keep that in place for five years with the possibility of two optional renewals, for five years each? Two terms for five years each. The renewal is at the discretion of the tenant. So St. Joseph's gets to say, we want to renew, which is fine, I think. But there is no provision for an increase in the rent. Where we left the matter prior to the approval was to... The county judge wanted to look into square footage, and what is rent value, what are places going for in Navasota or Grimes County. I had a discussion with Commissioner Walker about, you know, what we had found out, if anything, where we were headed, what's the status. I think it was finally determined that the amount that's in place now is the appropriate amount to continue for the next five years. But there was the question then of, what do you do after the five? Do you increase the amount? Do you keep it at forty-nine thousand a month, or whatever the number is? Now, I talked to the county judge, and he said to me that his preference was that that number actually changed based, be based upon a CPI adjustment. And that is, you look at the Consumer Price Index each year and see what the increase is for each year. You don't, obviously, assess an increase for each year of the five-year term. But when you get to the first year of the new five-year term, you have an increase that's five years in the making, versus just one year in the making. And so, if you will, turn to page fourteen at the bottom. You have that as an attachment. And paragraph nineteen is entitled Renewal Options. Notice you have the unilateral option of extending the term of this lease for up to two additional terms. Each is called a renewal term of five years each on the same terms and conditions as provided in this lease. Provided, however, that... We'll turn to page fifteen. Provided that exercise of the extension option hereby granted tenants shall be in writing and delivered to landlord at six, at least six months prior to expiration of the term, or renewal term of the lease then in effect. Obviously, you could change that if you wanted to. It's a matter of how much notice do we want, uh, to know whether or not we've got to find somebody else to get in that facility? As you recall, the original deeds have a condition that the property be used as a hospital or sanatorium, I think is what it says. If you look then at paragraph C, nineteen C, which is at the top of page fifteen, the base rent of forty-nine thousand eight hundred thirteen and zero dollars, as set forth in Section One, shall be adjusted at the beginning of the first renewal term to be the base rent, plus the change in the Consumer Price Index compounded annually, so that the first renewal term rent will be the same amount as if the base rent had been adjusted by the CPI each year of the initial five-year term in order to arrive at the amount to be paid for the renewal term. This process will be repeated to determine the rent for a second renewal term, if so. Uh, that, uh, the county judge gave me most of that. I may have tinkered with it a little bit. I thought he did a good job of detailing what he was, uh, or capturing what he was trying to, um, the, the idea he was trying to set forth. So that is the change that I've made since the date it was set for the approval. The approval had a blank in it, so there was, obviously, that's not what you wanted to leave St. Joe's with, is, hey, here's what we've approved, and it's got a blank in it. So, uh, this is, uh, and, and they may very well say, we're not interested in it. I, I think, and Commissioner Walker can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they've said they're fine with continuing the lease on the same rental, uh, the same rent amount. We have not had a discussion with them about what happens, uh, in the two renewal terms. And so this is going to be a proposal to them, you'll approve it and say, we're okay with it if you are, um, but it's still subject to their approval.
Right.
And when you base it upon the CPI, that has nothing, and we also talked about the square footage, and we got all of that worked out. But this is just based upon CPI, it doesn't have to connect with square footage, because we also talked about, at some point, Grimes County needs to know what they actually, square footage, what we actually have there. You know, we have several pieces that the hospital doesn't rent out. And, and, uh, to determine what are we, you know, at some point, the, the appraisal district, we can request that they go back in and they look at, uh, the square footage, but because this is exempt property and it belongs to the county, they had not did a recent, uh, evaluation of the square footage. So if we should choose to do that somewhere, maybe within the next five years, we can get that on, uh, get that done.
On the renewal contract?
Not, not on the renewal, but we need to know what we actually have there. That was one of the things that held up the contract, was at first, we'd be looking at square footage. Well, we couldn't determine actually the square footage. We had a good idea, but things could have changed over the years.
And I would suggest to, that's certainly a good idea. I would suggest to the court that you assign somebody that responsibility, either staff or one of you all, because we just talked about it generally, it won't get done. So if you want it to be done, either assign somebody, and I don't know who the right person would be to do that, whether, like I said, probably not. And Al's gonna hate me for saying, but maybe Al, or, or somebody that you would say, hey, I think this is a guy.
He's not here right now, so we could.
There you go, he just volunteered.
Well, the, um, the appraisal district said that they would do it, but at a cost. It's gonna cost the county to, for them to go in and reappraise it.
Yeah, and I, and I don't know, it, maybe you wanna reappraise it. Just recall, we're under the requirement to use that as a hospital. If St. Joe's decided they wanna build something on the loop, and they moved out there, you'd be in a place of, either you'd have to find another tenant that was willing to use it as a hospital, or we'd have to go back to the heirs or the beneficiaries of the original grantors, and get them to remove that restriction, in which case we could use, the county could use the property for county purposes, though I don't know what those would be.
Yeah.
Uh, or, uh, you lose the property. The county loses the property and goes back to the family, and they can use it for whatever they want to. Um, but just be mindful of that, is that this was the, you are not necessarily in the typical position of a landlord negotiating rent. Uh, you're in a place where you're gonna lose the facility if you don't get somebody in there that qualifies as a hospital. And you're in no place to be running your own hospital.
Amen.
So it, it is what it is, and.
And, and we also talked about finding those heirs, because we also have the question of the portion that we were using for, um, the county's portion, uh, Precinct Three. And it's fallen in disrepair, and are we looking at maybe possibly tearing off part of it, or where, where we are with that building? Because that building is basically sitting there, you know, and St. Joseph's CHI is saying that they don't want to use it for anything, so.
And we are paying water and electricity for that building.
And I talked to Commissioner Walker, and I'll take responsibility for doing that. I, I will see if we can find the heirs, but either word of mouth. I, I think they're related to, uh, the Boyon family. I think I've said that to you. I think they are, I'm not positive, but, um, I'll see what I can find out on that. And, uh, then the question will be, do we wanna have a conversation? You know, how far do you wanna go with conversation? And, and, I mean, if the facility, if it's not being used as a hospital, then there's the question of, and this is the thing that we've never, um, come up against, what if a portion, or a substantial portion, is being used as a hospital? Does that mean part of it reverts back and part of it doesn't? And that's, that question remains. I think it'd be good to have answers, and it may very well be that, uh, the, the family wants the county to, uh, purchase, whatever that reversionary interest is, to make it go away. And that would be up to you to decide whether it's in the, you know, county's best interest or the best interest of the people to do that. But I will take on that responsibility.
Okay, so noted.
So we have five years to explore a couple of things.
We'll move a little faster than that, Commissioner, I think.
Okay, thank you.
I'll have an answer the same, around the same time that you get a pen. That may be five years.
Thank you. That'd be all right with me.
So, Mr. Fols, just to, just to confirm, what we approved today is the language in the contract as is, but this contract then is gonna go to St. Joe's for their approval, uh, based on what we have, the changes that we've made, correct?
Right, and, and any negotiation, you often, or in most negotiations, you have each party will, uh, either set forth their own draft, or set forth their revisions or red lines, and say, this is what I can or can't live with. This is your first draft at the renewal. And, and we thought that was the first draft ready to go. Uh, because that blank in this one issue, I'm asking the court to now reconsider and approve this as your first offer. Uh, they, they gave us their proposal for additional language, and because we've incorporated that, and we haven't changed the rent amount, I suspect they'll approve of it, because they're not required to, uh, uh, exercise their right for the options. We're increasing the amount for the, for the, uh, term, or the option term, but there's no requirement that they exercise that. So I suspect that they'll agree to it, but I don't know that for sure.
All right. Commissioner Walker, since you've been so involved, would you like to make a motion?
Hi, yes, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the lease agreement between Grimes County, Texas, and St. Joseph's Regional Health Center, and authorize the county judge as signature. I'd like to add CHI, St. Joseph's.
Oh, it's fine, to the, it's, it's on the contract, and if you wanna say you're making that as part of the agenda, that's fine. I mean, that's, it's part of the lease. We added that to the lease.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Husfield seconds the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of, uh, approving Agenda Item Number Eleven? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. In the absence of Commissioner Dobianski, I don't know if we'll get to adjourn this meeting or not, but if somebody wanted to step up to the plate.
Well, I've made the motion since these nine years ago.
I'll second. Okay, Commissioner Walker makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, and it is about nine thirty-nine. Thank you, have a great day.